And having read the law around what you're asking us to do. But I'm sure you all have read it, so it'd be easy to discuss it with you. But would you change your hairstyle, though?
Yes, I'm letting my gray come out. I'm embracing my gray.
Oh, I just suggested you change your style, but you know.
Oh, yeah, I did. It's growing longer. Yeah.
We have a study. Are you, you, you still have Bethune?
No, I'm not. I'm at, um, I'm at the, um, I'm director of early, I mean, of, um, elementary education.
What happened to Bethune?
Uh, it's still there. It has, uh, they have another principal.
Did they fix the school up?
Uh, where they are in the process of doing that.
They've been doing that for three years now.
Well, I think it's gonna happen this time.
Oh, if we give you some more money, you'll do it this, okay. All right, but it's.
No, no.
Yeah, when I was there before, they promised to do it. I set that school up.
Oh, did you? Okay, with Dr. Hawkins?
Yeah, it was Chase.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I remember when it turned over with Dr. Hawkins.
Yeah, we didn't make it a Montessori school, but we, we did do it.
Yeah, but you had quite a few Montessori classes in there as well.
Yeah, but it was different than the one up in Michigan. I went to Michigan to take a look.
Yeah, that's all Montessori.
Yeah, that's, that's a Montessori.
But I, I thought Bethune was a little bit better because you had Montessori, traditional, and special ed.
I have no.
Which means that you can service all children.
Yeah, you remember I was there, yeah. I was, I'm aware of that.
So I think you all's concept was a little bit better.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You know, I'm not gonna argue with my friends if you say so. I believe it.
Okay, very good. It's good seeing you.
It's good to be, well, it's good to see you rather than be seen too. Yeah, yeah. If you followed down Trump, a lot of us won't be here.
We gotta get out and vote.
Oh, we doing everything now, but we're in, but we should be working on the census. Everybody knows. Be working on this other stuff. Nobody working on the census.
Just FYI, we are live now on channel.
Oh, are you? Okay, I didn't know that.
I did talk to Councilwoman Brown, and she is preparing to get on, so hopefully we can start soon.
Are you done, Attorney Wilson? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This guy in.
Councilwoman Caldwell here?
I am.
Okay. We get waiting on Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
As I said, Coach, we're way behind schedule for tonight's meeting.
I'm going to call her again just to check in, but we might see if Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell can get us started. I know that one of the items of the, on the agenda, she is the sponsor of. Let me check again.
Are you suggesting the referendum is before the Finance Committee?
It is, this evening, yes, sir.
Oh, it's in the finance, okay.
That's why all these lovely faces are here.
I just thought they wanted to learn something, the reason they want.
Wow.
They wanna teach us something. That's good. That's, that's good, too. That'll be helpful. You, you saw, Ms. Ramsey taught me something about a school that I opened.
So I'm getting her voicemail. I think in the interest of time, um, we should continue. So Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell, can you kick off our Finance Committee meeting?
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening. Linda Barnes Caldwell, Councilwoman of the Fifth District. Welcome to the Finance Committee meeting for September the eighth. On the agenda, we have, um, three items this evening. CPO twenty twenty forty-four and ordinance revising twenty twenty appropriations for the Police Department Operations Budget Fund seven twenty-five donation fund for the fiscal year beginning January one twenty twenty and ending December thirty-one twenty twenty, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince City of Gary. CPO twenty twenty dash forty-five and ordinance revising the JAG budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty, sponsored by Mayor Jerome, a Prince City of Gary. And CPR twenty twenty dash fifteen, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Gary, expressing support for the Gary Comm- Community School Corporation tax referendum, sponsored by Linda Barnes Caldwell, Councilwoman of the Fifth District. If it's not a problem, I would like to take this out of order. And can we do the refer, uh, the resolution first, CPR twenty twenty dash fifteen, since we're behind schedule?
Yes, I have no problem.
All right, and at this time, uh, the overview will be done by Dr. Paige McNulty, the Emergency Manager for the Gary Community School Corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I do, uh, Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry. I do have a question. If you're the sponsor, her name is not mentioned. Did this come from the school system?
Uh, it came as a resolution from the Gary Com- uh, Common Council from myself.
Well, why would, why would we ask, uh, Dr. McNulty to explain it to us if we, if you're the sponsor, why wouldn't you explain it? If, if, if it originated from you?
Because she has more information.
I agree to that. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Dr. McNulty.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone letting me, uh, be allowed to speak tonight. It's, uh, an honor to be able to, uh, address the council this evening, so I appreciate that. But I'm here this evening to, to give an overview of the referendum that's being put forth on November third for the ballot for the Gary Community, um, schools. We are looking to seek a referendum for seven point nine million dollars over a period of eight years. We have looked at the dollars amount several different times, and as you've probably heard, we did meet with various stakeholders. We did meet with the pastors, um, now I'm gonna say at least six weeks ago now, and we're speaking with them about the dollars and what we were needing it for. And after the conclusion of that meeting, many of whom are on this call here this evening, um, it was discussed that we were, they felt that we were not asking for enough, and so they asked for us to increase the dollar amount that we were seeking. We are seeking an operating referendum, not a capital, and I want to clarify that because I think there's been some misconception about that. We do have what's called House Bill ten sixty-five, in which we did receive twenty-five million dollars for capital improvement, and that's the money we are getting for, um, uh, from the state for the, uh, delay of paying the debt. So we're getting twenty-five million dollars, which have started already, that collection, and that is for, again, capital improvement, and that's for things such as, um, painting and roofing and HVAC boilers, fixing Bethune, um, and many of our various schools. In addition, we are seeking now a referen- referendum for operating dollars, and that is for things such as a pay raise for our teachers who have not had a raise in twelve years, and also for things such as, um, increasing our arts and extracurricular activities, safety and student support services, which have had to be cut over the years. So I wanted to make sure that there was a clarification between those two pots of money. We are making sure that we are trying to reach as many stakeholders as possible um, to make sure that the facts are clear, because there has been some misunderstandings about the, the funds. I do want to state that there are two different sets of debt that has been talked about, and I want to make sure that I'm clear about that. The annual deficit has been reduced from twenty-two million dollars to six million dollars. Again, that's the annual deficit, your operating money that you use day to day, from twenty-two million to six million. And then our total debt has been reduced from one hundred and four million dollars to seventy-nine million dollars. So again, it's one hundred and four million down to seventy-nine million dollars when MGT first began. I also want to state that back in two thousand and fifteen, before the state takeover, so between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and seventeen, the, the Gary Board of Trustees, School Board, uh, increased the debt by twenty-two million dollars. So we, they added debt before MGT came, and then since then, we've been able to decrease that again from one hundred and four down to seventy-nine million dollars. We are headed in the right direction with decreasing the debt on both of those fronts, and this is the quickest avenue to get the school district back to local control. We have to have a balanced budget for two years, and once we have a balanced budget, then the district goes back to local control, which is definitely in our horizon. We are very excited about the improvements that have been made, um, in the Gary Community Schools. We've been able to pass out forty-five hundred Chromebooks this summer with hotspots in them for our students. We've been able to add extracurriculum, um, as Ms. Dunham, I see, is on the call and can attest to. We've done copious amounts of professional development for our staff to get them prepared for this coming school year, and are providing many leadership opportunities for, within our own staff, to do the trainer of trainers for our district. So I think that things are headed in the right direction. Our students deserve to have, um, good schools, good curriculum, and they need to have teachers prepared and ready to teach in front of them. I do know, um, hopefully that you saw that in the paper, we did partner with IUN University, and we've been able to hire, um, about forty-five new teachers in collaboration with working with IUN, and we are paying for those teachers to get their certification through IUN, and while they finish their certification, it's an eighteen-month program, then they, uh, have signed on to stay with us for an additional at least three years, and that's a huge win for the Gary schools. So as you know, there's a teacher shortage in the state of Indiana. It's hard to get teachers. I applaud our teachers for sticking with us for as long as they have without a raise, but I cannot continue to retain and recruit teachers if we aren't competitive with our neighboring districts. So this is, um, why we have committed to giving the first million to the teachers, uh, which would be about a four percent raise for the, uh, for the teachers going forward. I know I've been saying a lot, so I can continue on, but I, I will pause there and take questions if there are any.
Council, do we have any questions for Dr. McNulty?
I did wanna, I, I did wanna say real quick that the average ask that we are talking about is about twenty cents a day, and that's based on the average homestead assessment of a sixty thousand dollar house. And that seniors, any, a senior who is sixty-five years or older gets a tax exemption, and that the tax calculator again is on our website, so they would have to go onto the website. They can click on there, add that they get a tax exemption, and the, the impact of seniors is minimal, very minimal. But the average, um, tax assessment to a homeowner of a sixty thousand dollar house is twenty cents a day, or about sixty dollars a year.
All right. Councilman Ley, what's your question?
It's not a question, uh, it's more of a statement. I wanna be opening up front about it. I'm against the referendum. But, uh, Dr. McNulty, one of us is a little bit confused about ten sixty-five. You keep saying the state is giving the city of Gary twenty-five million. That's not quite accurate. I believe you will find that it's our twenty-five million. What they're doing is deferring payments of approximately five hundred thousand dollars. I believe it's, oh, I'm not sure whether it must, it might be a year, it might be something less than a year. So there's no twenty-five million being sent in here. It would be like you may today look at buying a car, and they say you don't have to pay for the first ninety days, but ultimately you must pay for the car. Now, are you familiar with the name Jack Martin?
I am.
And what was Jack Martin's relationship to the Gary Public School System prior to April the twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen?
Jack Martin was brought in from the State Department to be the Fiscal Manager, but the, the School Board still had their full authority at that point.
But anything that the School Board did at that point, didn't they have to get a clearance from DUAB to do it?
No, sir. The, Jack Martin certainly simply advised the School Board, and then the School Board still had full voting powers. So there was many instances that Jack Martin brought things before the board that was not, uh, approved. Um, but, um, but Jack Martin was not the Emergency Manager, if you will, as it stands today. The, um, Board still had their full voting authority at that time.
No, I understand that. You've read House Bill thirteen fifteen, have you not?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you seem to be contradicting what's in House Bill, uh, thirteen fifteen was passed in two thousand and eighteen. As I understand the bill, and again, you probably much more versed in the bill, uh, the state decided at that point to strip the Board of all of its authority and made it an Advisory Board, but it also, in the course of doing that, stripped the requirements of the Emergency Manager to have a discussion with the mayor and the Fiscal, uh, Management Board. Is that still in existence?
Oh, I still meet with the Advisory Board and the Fiscal Management Board quarterly.
Now, when I was on the Fiscal Management Board up to May the nineteenth, which was prior to you, for several years, they claimed they were gonna have a plan put together that would improve the educational level of the Gary Public School System. That was not done. I'm not necessarily blaming you. I'm blaming, blaming the whole process. You came from the Indiana State Board of Education, is that correct?
I was hired by the Indiana School Board, uh, by the State Board of Education prior to becoming the Emergency Manager.
Okay, maybe my.
Excuse me, to oversee the federal program.
So you went federal programs, you worked for the state at that time?
Correct.
Okay, so you were hired by the state to come back here, maybe in MGT. Are you familiar with the name Courtney?
Yes.
Explain to the council what, who Courtney is. I ca- I can't say her last name, it's too difficult.
She, she is a member of the DUAB Board. She's the Secretary for the DUAB Board. She overs, helps oversee, uh, what's happening here at the Gary Schools.
Okay, and again, uh, and I mean everything as politely as I can. In House Bill thirteen fifteen, she described as Executive Director. Now, which is she? Isn't she the Executive Director?
Yes, yes.
So you, you, Miss Red was in thirteen, or you made a mistake? So that's.
At our meetings, I apologize. At our meetings, she is the Secretary of our meetings.
Right, but she has been designated by DUAB full authority, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's under House Bill thirteen fifteen. Let me take you back, and, and again, uh, Madam Chairman, I'm talking about, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell. When I've asked too many questions, just cut, cut me off. Uh, and I certainly will understand that, give other people opportunity. Uh, in, in Senate Bill five sixty-seven, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's the State Board of Finance had indicated, um, you could come to them for money, is that correct?
I believe so.
Have you read Senate Bill five sixty-seven?
I don't have it in front of me like you do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, I'm, but I'm a lot older than you, and I still remember a lot, a lot of stuff. I remember in two thousand and seventeen, Dr. Smith went before the, uh, and he asked for a, a substantial amount of money to be given to the Gary Public School System. I believe the sum was fifty million dollars. It did not make it through first reading, was never assigned. So it seems to me, as I understand what Tim Brown is, is telling us, is that if we do something here in terms of this referendum, he's going to, to help the Gary Public School System. Is that, have you heard that statement?
I have not heard that statement, no. I've actually heard the contrary, that, that, uh, we need to pass this referendum so that we are showing support for our school district, because they're not going to give any more money.
Well, is that statement being made by Tim Brown, who's the head of Ways and Means?
I have not heard that from Tim Brown, no. Heard it from DUAB.
Okay, okay, but it's my understanding, the, the authority hired in DUAB is, uh, Mr. Tim Brown, he's over Ways and Means. He has indicated unless this referendum is passed, he will do nothing to help the city of Gary. What's unfortunate about that, he's had three years to help the city of Gary, and he's done nothing to help the city of Gary. Uh, and again, I can't hold you responsible for his action, but that's certainly, uh, that should be, the citizens of this community should be made aware of it. Now, the way the, way you reduced the twenty-two million down to six, I understand this, the difference. I didn't know it was down to seventy-nine million, the overall debt, was that you did that by closing schools, moving people into one location, which reduced utilities and everything else. And also, you got rid of a lot of experienced teachers and brought in teachers that didn't have experience, that needed to be certified through Indiana University.
I would dispute that.
Okay, what part of that was inaccurate?
I would say that we did not get rid of our senior teachers. I would, I would tell you that our, our mean age of our teachers is fifty-nine years old, um, and that it's not just a, a Gary problem, that again, as I mentioned, that there is a teacher shortage in the state of Indiana, so it's difficult for, um, most districts to find teachers. Um, and Gary is not unlike any other district, so we, I don't believe that we are letting go of our senior teachers. Uh, again, Ms. Dunham's on the phone. She can, uh, verify or, or dispute that, but we just have a teacher shortage area, shortage, period, like most school districts.
I agree with most of what you just said, but let me ask the question a different way. At, at any point, uh, I would assume that it's a continuation of what one, uh, Emergency Manager has done to another. Didn't Dr. Hinckley go to Purdue University and hire people that were not certified to be teachers?
I cannot answer that. I don't know.
Okay. That's, that's the group I'm talking about. They, 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 they went to Purdue, uh, and got basically, uh, people that were not certified to be teachers, and that may be the group that you're training. Are they teachers in terms of?
I'm working not, I'm not working with Purdue, I'm working with IUN on a, with a different group. Many of these people were already employed here, um, as teachers. Some of them were employed here, some were not, that we recruited, and they just simply need to finish their teaching degree, or get their master's degree, or whatever the case may be, and so we're helping them get their certification.
Would certification be because they're operating on an emergency license?
That's correct.
What, so they're not, they, they came in here because they were deficient. If you have an emergency license, that means you're not necessarily trained in there in what you teach.
That's correct, and that's happening all across the state, sir.
Uh, again, I, I, I don't disagree. It's in California, Alabama. I, I don't disagree with that. I'm just not as knowledgeable about those states as I am about what's going on here, because I was on the Fiscal Manager Board, the School Board, and have a relationship with it. At this point, let me stop and let the people that are favorable to, uh, to the referendum. I will have more time to spend, uh, outside of the council meeting dealing with it, but.
I'll share your number with Dr. Mike Nalty, so she can get in contact with you.
Oh, she had enormous opportunity to get in time, contact with me. She did not do so.
Okay.
She, no, no, so if, if you're gonna say that, you may, that's another fact you are not aware of. Very early in the process, very early in the process, because my pastor, Dwight Gardner, was involved in what was going on, I called the school system and asked to speak to Dr. McNulty. I was told by Mrs. Patterson, so let me be clear on that, that she would get back to me. I said, "Well, maybe it's something I do not understand." I was trying to figure out a way to support the referendum. So I asked certain information to be sent to me. That had to occur at least two months ago. So no, it's, she has my number. I gave it to her myself. Well, I shouldn't say to her personally. I gave it to Mrs. Patton several months back, and I, I never received the call, nor did I.
I apologize for the misunderstanding. The letter I received from you that you gave to my administrative assistant was not about the referendum.
I never sent a letter. Let me try one more time, and I withdrew that letter. I sent to you information concerning a pilot program where I wanted to deal with students at, at Westside. Mr. Mahone, I sent him the letter. I then called your office along with Mr. Mahone and retracted. I said, "Under the circumstances, I wouldn't ask you to do it." What I'm talking about is a call to Mrs. Pat, uh, I believe it's, uh, Patton. And, and at that point, I was advised that you would call me, uh, and give me information on the referendum. I was trying to find a way to support it. Uh, I never did get the call, but that's not the reason I'm not supporting it, because you failed to call. But I wanted to correct, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell, when she said, "You have my number." You, you, you had my number. The call was just not made, yes.
Okay. Do we have any others who would like to speak on the referendum?
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell, I would have a couple of questions for Dr. McNulty. Dr. McNulty, Councilman Weatherspoon here. First question I'd like to ask is, um, what was the original debt when MGT took over?
So again, there was two, there's two different data points, and one is the total debt, and that was a hundred and four million dollars when MGT took over, and that's the total debt. And then there was the, uh, the annual deficit, and that was twenty-two million.
And where do we stand now?
The twenty-two million has gone down to six million, and the total debt has gone from one hundred and four down to seventy-nine million.
What are the, um, because I asked you for this when I met with you, and I still have not received it yet, a listing of the total assets owned by the Gary Communities, Community School Corporation, and what is their net worth? Or should I say their growth? What is their worth?
I don't have that information that I can give you tonight, but I can tell you that we had, uh, thirty-two properties, and we're down to twelve properties. Um, so we have, uh, been selling, uh, properties or in the process of selling properties. We had thirty-two down to twelve.
Gary Community School Corporations owns more than buildings. They own a considerable amount of land, so what I'm asking for, the total amount in properties that is owned, I'm talking about buildings as well as land.
Yes, and some of that included land, not just properties.
Okay. You all, speaking of land, the vacant abandoned buildings, the buildings that pose a, uh, safety hazard within our community. I've heard nothing about any plan whatsoever to deal with these buildings. Um, I have several of them in my district that are wide open. As many of the citizens know, and people that are here with us tonight, know that we've had bodies that were actually found in these buildings. What plan do you all have? Is there a plan in place to deal with that? They represent a significant safety hazard. I hear all the time that this thing is about the children, but the fact of the matter is, these buildings are within the children's neighborhoods. In addition to that, they bring down property values, uh, eyesores, and just basic safety issues. What, what plan do you have as it relates to those?
Yes. Um, and so we have, there's eight different phases that we're gonna be using with the, the monies that we are receiving. And in Phase Two, which begins this winter, so November, December, um, we are going to be, uh, demoing, uh, several properties. That again begins in a couple of months. We have about six of those buildings, um, that have been sold, and several of those, uh, properties will be. and several of those properties will be announced soon, and those will be taken down as well.
Is there any issue with plywood and boarding these things up until they're sold?
No, we have ply, we have boarded them up many times, and as quickly as we can board them up, the boards come off, but we can do it again.
I've seen nothing done, honestly, nothing done in the second district as it relates to these schools. We have Horseman that is wide open, we have Edison, Chase School, Bor, and the list goes on and on. Brunswick, and nothing has been done in terms of securing these buildings. And that is a major concern for me, a major concern. I also asked the question, you know, the timeliness of this referendum. You know, right now, we're going through a global pandemic, which has wrecked our economy on a national level. We're looking at a community right now that is composed primarily, the property owners are primarily seniors who own fixed incomes, and heck, you know, we're looking at an unstable economy. Even the market has dropped over the last two business days. The timeliness of this, can you speak on that?
Yeah, and I understand and totally hear what you're saying. Unfortunately, I think that our biggest turnout, as you know, of voters is going to be during the presidential election. We, I do know that Maryville, our neighbor, is going for a referendum in November as well, and I feel confident that Maryville's referendum is going to pass. So again, this isn't something that schools do lightly. Unfortunately, it's a situation that the State Department has put all school districts in that at some point in their school's career, they have to go for referendums now. And this is the time that Gary schools need to go for a referendum if we're going to have a chance to get out of local control and not have to make more cuts. So again, Maryville's going for one, Hammond just passed one, Crown Point, Munster, I could go on and on. And so this isn't something that we're asking that is unusual to school districts going for a referendum. So that's why we've tried to keep the dollar amount and the ask very low. And to your point about seniors, again, most seniors are going to be exempt from this tax increase. They need to go onto the tax calculator to check it out.
You know, I wouldn't compare this community to Maryville, Munster, or any other community. This community is very unique, and this debt that the Gary Community School Corporation has is unique. You know, Maryville is not suffering through a debt such as this.
I agree, but we need to start changing our narrative if we want to be like a Maryville.
I'm not saying that I want to be like a Maryville, okay, that's not the point here.
I understand.
That we're in a different situation than those communities. And to compare us is like comparing apples to oranges. How many students do we presently have in the school system?
As of today, we have forty-four hundred and some change registered.
Now, what time of year, has the year passed when you actually get your actual full numbers that your monies are based on? I mean, does that count based on a projection? Or is it based on actual hard numbers of students?
Actual hard numbers of students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. McNulty, for your leadership, and as well, I see Ms. Dunham is on the line. I have a few questions. Could you explain in a little bit more detail about the actual mechanics of the tax, in terms of what the increase would be, the exemptions for seniors? I think it'll be helpful to kind of hear the mechanics of it. And then I have a follow-up comment I'd like to make, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, yes, we're looking for an average ask of about twenty cents a day. And I say average because it could be different depending on your household. But when we looked at the data across Gary, the average home assessed value was sixty thousand dollars, which comes to twenty cents a day, or about sixty dollars a year. Again, so you need to go onto the tax calculator and plug in your own personal information so you'll see if it's a little bit less or a little bit more, but the average ask is twenty cents a day per assessed home value. Business owners is fifty-five cents a day, and again, I've already met with US Steel, who's got the biggest pie in this that they're going to be needing to pay, and they were completely one hundred percent on board and support, which was a great thing. Any senior that's sixty-five years or older is going to have tax exemptions for this, and they can go, again, on our website and plug in their information and hit the tax exemption and be able to see that there'll be minimal to no impact for them.
Thank you, and one other quick question. What would be the distinction between, let me just say that I'm more concerned with curriculum and instruction for the children who are currently in the schools. I understand the concerns about dilapidated buildings. I understand needing to board up buildings. I understand needing to demolish buildings. But my priority is not about buildings, especially those that are no longer being used. My priority is ensuring that there is proper, top-rate, best-in-class instruction happening for the children who are currently being educated. And so what is the percentage of dollars that will go toward curriculum and instruction versus ongoing infrastructure challenges?
Yes, great question, and I agree with you. And so we're looking to spend probably sixty percent of this, that's going to go directly towards kids and curriculum and professional development for our staff so that they will have the best quality instruction. And again, Ms. Dunham can probably attest to this, but I believe our teachers have gotten tons of copious amounts of training just this summer so that we'd be up to speed on our Google platforms and our educational platforms that we're doing virtually right now. And then so that we'll be ready also when school kids do come back to school, because we know that's the best place for them to be is in front of their teachers. And so we do anticipate that at some point our students will be back, and we want to continue with project-based learning. We have applied for three of our schools to become STEM-certified schools for next school year, and we need to continue expanding those efforts so that our kids have the same opportunities as the rest of the districts, spelling bees and all of the other bowls, science bowl and all those things. We want to add to our curriculum throughout the day and after school so that our kids can have those opportunities, and all those are going to happen.
Well, let me just say quickly that you have my full support. In my professional life, I'm a real estate broker, and it's very clear to me that we are not attracting families to this community. And the city of Gary will not be sustainable if we don't have, especially young families with children, who are willing to move here and invest here. We're not going to be able to attract mid-to-high-skill-level employers if we have a poor public school system because their executives and managers and regular staff are not going to want to send their kids to an underperforming school. So I know it's absolutely critical for us to sustain and grow our population. We have to have excellent schools, and I do think it's important, what Maryville, Valparaiso, Hammond, Crown Point, and what other school districts have done, because people are looking to move into a community, look at two things, how you treat your elderly and how you treat your children. If your priorities are not clear on those two fronts, you are not a desirable community. And so I think it's well worth the sacrifice because it's no good to have low taxes if no one's living here to actually pay them. We have to make this investment, so I look forward to learning more and to working with all of you who are in support of this to make this resolution happen and hopefully get it over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Lake, can we let someone else speak?
Of course, of course.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Thank you. So I just have a comment, and then I have two questions for Dr. Page. So kind of to echo what my colleague Councilman Godwin just stated in terms of, it is important for us to understand what's happening in our surrounding neighborhoods because we want to stay competitive. And as we're looking to ensure that that curriculum is increased, because even before the debt happened with the Gary Community School System, I know that the curriculum was an issue prior to the debt being overwhelming situation as well. So it's good to hear that sixty percent of funding will be allocated towards increasing to curriculum. But I want to confirm also that the referendum proceeds, I think you stated that it was more operational in terms of the support level. And in your Path Forward overview that I think was uploaded to the Gary Community School site, I did take a look at that, so thanks for providing that as well. I encourage everyone on the call to read that as well. There was a section that I think is very important, and one of the pillars that you mentioned was engagement. And I just want to be transparent with you, and getting feedback from constituents and other community members, the feedback is that the push or the marketing is that this is an opportunity to invest in our community. This is an opportunity to invest in our children. Well, I just want to be honest with you, Dr. Page, the community does not have confidence in the Gary Community School Corporation. And so that would be an issue ongoing, right? So has or not that you, that.
They said temporarily, okay, but when I take my finger off the spacebar.
Mr. Talbot, can you turn your mic, mute your mic?
I'm sorry, I'm a computer illiterate, forgive me. What should I do? Can I speak now?
No, not yet, someone else is speaking. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think it's important for us to make sure and to ensure that all entities work together because that's something that we're lacking. The community school system, the city councils, well, the administration, we have to work together. I would recommend that in this resolution that we also add a section that supports also what you were stating in the path forward, that you would give quarterly reports. I would request that you also come to the council and give a quarterly update for the first two years in terms of the progress and what we're doing, to make sure that we all are aligned, that that would be okay.
I would love to do that.
Okay, my two questions for you is, I just want to understand if any of the proceeds from the referendum itself only will be used to pay for debt? And then I also would like for you to give us an overview, if not this, then what? Right, so if this is not passed, I think it's very important for the public to understand what will happen to the community as a whole, as well as the education system if this does not pass.
Yeah, great questions. So to answer your first question, this is not going to be used towards paying any debt. And then if it doesn't pass, then we have to be, you know, looking back as you do with your own personal finances and say, what else can we cut? And those things might be having to close another school, certainly will not be able to have after-school activities or the bowls that we just talked about, or the fine arts and those types of things, which is, in my view, as a mom with twins at home, that's not okay. The kids deserve to have those things, so we will definitely have to go back to the drawing board to see where else we can make cuts so that we can get to that eventually, to that balanced budget and get the school district back to local control. But yeah, we would be making cuts for sure. I do want to mention two quick things that you mentioned, Ms. Atkins, and that I want to talk about a little bit more about the curriculum and to make sure that people understand that we are adding extra pathways to our CTE programming as well as another avenue for students. So we have added several this school year, such as the aviation program, which is first to Northwest Indiana. We've got the Gary Airport right in our backyard. So we have partnered with an aviation, we've got two pilots now that we've got onboard, and we have the simulators at our CTE site, and we've got students already actively enrolled and going through the aviation program, which is huge, I think. We also have started the EMS programming and police and fire cadet programming so that we can have students graduate from school with a certificate that's already been paid for and into jobs within the community here. And we're going to continue to add three or four pathways a year at the CTE program. We have about eighteen or nineteen right now, and our goal is to add three or four new pathways every single year, but that costs money, and that's okay, but those are good things. We want to start students younger and not wait till they're juniors. We want them to start when they're in eighth grade so that they can have some options and explore some different pathways and say, hey, this is something I'm really interested in. They go through that pathway, they leave with a paid certification straight from high school. So I think that's a huge thing for us to make sure we mention. And then with the Path Forward, we put the Path Forward plan out, but I also want to make sure that I say that that's not a comprehensive plan. My goal, as I keep saying, is I want to be held accountable, just like kids get a report card. The school district needs to get a report card to show how we're doing academically and how we're doing across the district. And so my plan is to have that published every quarter, and you'll be able to see with our data dashboard how we're doing. We're going to drill down into the data, how we're doing across the district with third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, and where we need to continue our efforts. But we're planning on presenting that in full transparency to everybody quarterly.
Okay, follow-up question real quick, Dr. Page. So in your plan, I know that there was a lot of parameters and key performance indicators for each one of the pillars. So will you be assessing, I guess, defined metrics to make them more smart goals, if you will?
Absolutely.
We're going to increase X, Y, Z, but it doesn't say by, by what percentage at what time?
Right, and so we just had to, at this point, just wanted to put together the framework, and then within the next sixty days, I'll have the actual smart goals with the, we needed to get people in and get a baseline.
Right.
And so that's where we are, and so we will have definitely smart goals published for all of those.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll talk smart goals all day long, I'm a teacher, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justice Man Broar.
Yes, I believe my question has started being answered about if nothing happens, if the referendum does not pass, what happens? I do believe you started on that, but if it does not happen, and we're looking to get this passed in November, how soon would we start seeing these cuts and closing up buildings of that nature there? Because I do know that we definitely revenue, and depending on how the census come out, that's a whole nother conversation by itself to have. But if it does not happen, what happens?
Yeah, great question.
How fast?
Yeah, so we would not be making staff cuts because we're under contract immediately, but by next summer, by the end of this school year, let's say, we would definitely be looking at what facilities we need to take a look at and what staff members we need to take, you know, we need to consolidate for sure.
Thank you.
Hello?
Any other questions from any council members?
I still want to talk, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'll wait till other council people talk.
No one else is ready, so you can go ahead, Councilman Lake.
Just to correct, and I shall correct my president, because he is my president. People don't look at schools and senior citizens, they look at schools and employment. I assure you, employment is a much more vital area to look at than how they treat senior citizens. Dr. McNulty, let me ask a question. Now, in seventeen, MGT, has there been a structural change in MGT? A major structural, a substantial structural change in that organization? Personnel, anything of that nature?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so when they started out, they were, they were well informed in, not two thousand seventeen, they had five years in which to correct some problem, some problem they were supposed to correct. At that point, the takeover seemed to have been around the hundred million dollars. That seemed to have been, and a major part of that hundred million also was the Internal Revenue Service. There was predatory lending of fifty million dollars in bonds, thirty million from the Common School Fund. But why then do they need to extend their term by two years? In other words, they clearly are not going to get out by two thousand twenty-two. They need two thousand twenty-four to get out. What was triggering that change? Is it because they've been deficient in terms of the first five years, they didn't do certain things?
No, it's been a systematic need for change. I can tell you, because I used to be the superintendent in East Chicago, that I was here at one of the very first DUEF meetings that they had, actually, with Mayor Karen Freeman, and it was held at City Hall. And I came because we had a lead issue over in East Chicago, and so we were seeking funds at that point to help us with some relief with the lead issue. So I was here for one of the very first DUEF meetings that they held, and at that point, they were just trying to sort out payroll and find people's records and to find out who was even supposed to be getting paid. They were looking through filing cabinets, everything was paper, pencil. It was a monumental challenge, and so I think that not understanding the magnitude of the problem was part of it. It's been a yeoman's job to get things cleaned up and online and get the things in the right buckets, to say it politely.
Dr. McNulty, that don't, again, you said you have read, you've read the legislations. Senate Bill five sixty-seven say you're out here by two thousand twenty-two. You're now, so it didn't, so you should have known that, or GMT. If they didn't know that, I don't see how they could help us. You're extending now to twenty-four. In other words, the things that you have raised, those problems existed in seventeen, eighteen. They should have been aware of it. You're also saying you're going to do something now that is not in House Bill thirteen fifteen transparency. So you're saying you're going to ignore the law, which a lot of people ignore law. That's why they have these other institutions to put them in. You're going to ignore thirteen fifteen, which says that you can operate as a dictator, period. You don't have to do anything. So you're now saying, in spite of House Bill thirteen fifteen, you're going to now create all this transparency that this city has not had for, well, I'm going to. well, I'm going to, I'm going to say for emergency managers. I'm not really sure exactly what Jack Martin was. But Hinckley, Dr. Maritas, they have all come through here. It seems to be more of a cash cow than than anything being developed. Now, people have an interest in students. Anyone of sound mind and body have to be for young people to be fairly educated. I I'm much older and I was educated, so I certainly believe in that. I believe teachers should be paid. None of that is an issue with me. If if that was an issue to vote, yes, we will do something to assist the children. We will do something to, in fact, pay the teachers. I have no problem with it. I don't think MGT can do it. Not necessarily you. I don't believe it can be done. You've had three years, a little bit more than that, to make some improvement. And the only thing you've done is reduce the deficit of twenty-two million to six million. Now, you say you've gotten it down to seventy-nine million. That sounds almost mathematically impossible. Is that on gateway or that is seventy-nine million now? Is there a figure out there larger?
Yes, sir, it's on gateway.
Okay, so is that recently been put on there at seventy-nine million?
It's been on there for a while and then this year's budget will be loaded here within probably the next thirty days as well.
Okay, so how are you going to get around? You're going to ignore House Bill thirteen fifteen that you said you read? You're just going to ignore that?
I'm not exactly sure what you're saying as far as being a dictatorship, but but I believe.
No, no, not you. I apologize. I'm talking about if you do. They decided when they moved from Senate Bill five sixty-seven to go over to the House, they accomplished several things. They made it an advisory board. Matter of fact, they took a property right. This board didn't seem to have enough courage or something to to fight to get its money. They they couldn't do what they did. They should have sued the state. Probably would have prevailed. They had a property right to be paid. But you also got, and when I say you, I'm talking about a bigger you now. So I'm not talking about you. I can't blame you for this. You weren't here. What they did in House Bill thirteen fifteen, they said that you no longer had to communicate with the mayor. You no longer had to communicate for all practical purpose with the fiscal management board. On that initial board was former Senator Rogers, Dr. Kealan, Chancellor Purdue, myself and a and a young lady from downstate, she would call in over the telephone. I don't know if she ever makes meeting. Initially, I think was the superintendent of education was supposed to be there, but she didn't appear. She appointed designate. So at that point, they were not telling us things. In fact, when we wanted to do a new budget, they showed us an old budget, which had no relationship with the new budget, made absolutely no sense. I also have an accounting background. It made no sense what they were doing. So as a result, now who's who's even on the fiscal management board right now? Who's who's on that board?
So we still have a fiscal management board with Marlon Mitchell and Kelly Whitman and the person from Purdue that you just mentioned, and then Shalita Starks.
Well, wait a minute, you mean Dr. Kealan is gone too?
From Purdue?
Yes.
No, he's still there, I said.
Okay, well, who who is, who who replaced Senator Rogers? She left.
Shalita Starks.
Oh, Mr., okay, okay.
Madam Chairperson. Madam Chairwoman.
Councilwoman, you're muted at this.
Yes, sir, yes.
I I know you're addressing or giving an opportunity for the the city council members to respond, but I can share information that might clear up some of Councilman ladies' concerns.
Okay.
What what you may not be aware of, I agree with you, the thirteen fifteen was devastating to this community. And I have been working for two particular sessions where I've had opportunities to be on the DOAB board to get the kind of transparency that Dr. McNulty is talking about. But you may not be aware, we just entered into a contract with MGT, which will require them to have this transparency. They must hold the meetings that are designated or indicated in House Bill thirteen fifteen. And they must now allow constituents to ask questions and they must provide the answers. And so that's what I think that Dr. McNulty referring to the transparency. Plus, the community has worked with her through the ministry. And one of the things that she has agreed to and MGT has agreed to is to make sure that we have a advisory committee that will be working along with MGT to make the decisions relative to the use of these referendum dollars. So I just thought that might be of some significance.
Ma'am, Madam President.
But Dr. Smith, I I thought I was still speaking. I just gave him an opportunity. Unless something has changed, Dr. Smith, you're not a voting member of DOAB, are you?
No, but it's in their contract. It's in their contract and if they fail to do it, they will lose money. They 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 will get a, I think a total amount is is over three million dollars, but it's significantly reduced to two million dollars if they fail to do these benchmarks. Part of the benchmarks have to deal with them allowing the public to ask questions and they must provide information.
So that's in a contract between DOAB and MGT?
Yes, it was just signed at our last, approved at our last DOAB meeting.
So basically, that hasn't been communicated to the public as such, that's, and I'm.
I've shared it on several occasions. I don't know how well informed the the community is, but I've attempted to get the word out.
Why did they extend for two years?
Well, you know.
Why did they extend it from twenty-two to twenty-four? Again, that's in the law, but if they're changing the law, I'm not sure how they do that.
The contract is only for two years for MGT. The referendum goes.
No, 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 let's just talk about just at this, the extension of the two years. I I understand the referendum.
You talking, you talking this, the the two-year contract that was given to MGT?
Yes.
Okay, well, as you know, there was a thought to open it up for bits. However, with the pandemic, it was in a wisdom of the DOAB board to not try to bring a change. Spring left everything up in the air. And it was felt by the board that we could not make a change in this kind of situation that we found ourselves. My recommendation was for one year and and to see if the pandemic would resolve itself. MGT was asking for three years. The compromise, which was worked out by the chairman, was two years. And as you may be aware, DOAB has the right at any time based on the contract to abort the contract with MGT.
Madam Chairman, just one last question for Dr. McNulty. She mentioned something about sixty days. Dr. McNulty, could you explain that sixty days? Because sixty days that you were going to do something would put you on past November the third.
Yeah, the sixty days has nothing to do with the referendum.
Well, what did you mention? What what was the sixty days about?
I was talking about the the path forward plan that we have played posted on our website, which is a a plan talking about the transparency that we're talking about, our fiscal indicators, our curriculum, operations, things, benchmarks, smart goals, if you will, that we want to achieve and that we want to share with the community about academics. And then I was talking about in sixty days, we're going to have more of a baseline of metrics so that we can tell you where we stand academically, because we've been doing testing with our students. So you'll be able to see where we are with all third graders, all fourth graders, so that every quarter I can show you what progress we've made in each one of those areas.
Yes, ma'am, but that's after the referendum you're going to, why wouldn't you give us this metric before the referendum?
We have to do a baseline testing with our students.
Please forgive me, I I I don't understand why. You can't give them until after the the time for the referendum. That's when you can do it. You can't do it before then. I think Councilwoman Ty asked a question, which I thought was a good question. Why can't you do it twenty days from now, thirty days from now? Why do we have to get this information? Sixty days, which would put us on the other side of the referendum itself. We voted. We're going to vote November the third. Sixty days from now, the day is the eighth would be five days after we voted.
Well, again, the 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 testing and the plan has nothing to do with the referendum. It just is telling you a baseline.
Yeah, but you raised, well, she raised the question and you gave us, okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, do we have any others that would like to speak in support of the referendum?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, Pastor Jackson.
I just want the council to be aware that the Baptist Misses Conference, we fully support this referendum. And we represent about twenty-five to thirty churches and we ask them fully to be a source, a tool, support this referendum for the Gary Community School Corporation. And not that it means much, but I think statistically it shows that those who go to church is really wanting a huge, large voting basis. And so our memberships are showing support for this referendum. We have to take old politics out of this and put our children first, and that's the bottom line. I have never seen anything, to be fair, with so much hatred and anger when the bottom line is what can we do that would benefit our children? And no one, no one that is opposing it is telling me or those whom I represent any other option than what we have now. And so I just want to be clear that the ministers of Baptist Misses Conference of Gary, Indiana and the Visanti, we support this and we hope this council will support it as well.
May I speak? Hello, may I speak?
Um, Mr. Tolliver. Councilmember.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Tolliver. He muted himself. Okay.
Yeah, you can hear me now, right?
Yes, I can.
I'm, I I wasn't able to follow it. Let me just share with you that there are some things that are not being shared totally with you. Let's talk about this. Dr. McNulty said we had a debt of seventy-nine million. Well, that that number changes every day. We've, in the last two weeks, we've had anywhere from a hundred and twenty to ninety-four to seven to eighty-four. We don't know what the actual debt is. And that is because MGT has not provided an itemized breakdown of how much they've paid on our debt and how much they borrowed adding to that debt. In two thousand and fifteen, Jack Martin, Attorney Lee was accurate. Jack Martin was actually the, he was the financial consultant and he had final control over all expenditures. He had the final say. Our debt in nineteen, in two thousand and fifteen was seventy-five million. Now, if we, if we use Dr. McNulty's number of seventy-nine, which is, I believe, totally inaccurate. And then you add the ninety, the the seventy-two point one, that's a hundred and fifty-one million dollars. Now, how are we going to pay that? They they've given us a clue that the payment schedule is going to be this, five million dollars a year. And I'm using what they borrowed. You remember when they borrowed the twenty-nine million or deferred it? It was over four and a half years. That comes out to about four and a half to five billion dollars a year. How long would it take us to spit, to pay one hundred and fifty-one dollars and paying five million dollars a year? It would be, it would be, it would be close to twenty or thirty years. That's how long our debt would be. The other thing is this, let's look at MGT's performance up to date. They said that they were going to increase student enrollment. Our enrollment dropped from over twelve thousand down to what she admits is forty-two hundred or forty-four hundred. That's a seventy-five percent decline in the enrollment. Let's talk about, they said that they were going to improve student test scores. Every school, and I repeat, not one, but every school has declined in their academic performance over the last three years. What makes us think it's going to be different? Then we want to look at suspensions, which have went up. Then we want to look at every metric measurement that we have in terms of identifying what they were going to, how they were going to improve the schools. They failed. Now, what is that going to do for the the councilmen when we got a debt of a hu, over a hundred and fifty million dollars? And you asking tax, which is going to put the taxpayers over the cap? That's going to put us over the cap. How are we going to, when you want to get a street pay or you want to buy cars or fire truck, how are you going to take care of that? Our debt, our debt is going to be signed. We'll be paying for this debt for the, for most of us, the rest of our lifetimes. And for what? Do you know that there is, there is some accuracy to the statement that they did run off season teachers? I was a former teachers' union president and I know they ran them off be because because they were making too much. They've cut back on the amount that they pay teachers, which is seventy-five percent of our operating budget. They've cut back on the number of teachers. So we're supposed to have a a reduction in our overall, in our annual debt if that was true. We can't depend on any of the numbers that they give us because they give us what they want to give us when they want to give us that. Now, I want to share this with you. There is no rational way that we're going to ask senior citizens, people on fixed incomes, people that are renting for a plan. They develop, they determine how much money they needed before they developed a plan. How much sense does that make? They determined that they needed seventy-one point two million dollars and the plan came after that.
Okay, Mr. Tolliver, thank you.
Is that all I, I heard you talking to Dr. McNulty. Does anybody have any questions?
That was three minutes, sir.
What was, what about Dr. What about Dr. McNulty? She didn't have three minutes?
She did the overview, sir. And do do we have anyone else?
Councilwoman acknowledged for Mayor Karen Freeman Wilson.
I guess I see her.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Thank you and to the members of the council and to Dr. McNulty and the members of the school board, as well as the school corporation administrators and members of the public. First, I want to say that I am a taxpayer in the city of Gary. I also want to say that I am a product of the Gary Community School System. And I will say that I fought vociferously against the takeover of the schools, along with many of you. I will also say that I have not been historically a fan of MGT. But here's what I will tell you. I understand the value of this referendum. And I understand it as a tool to provide goods and services to our students that they would not otherwise get. I know that the teachers, like many city workers, have been without raises for an extended period of time. And that is not in any way impacted the services that they have given to our students, to our community. And I think it's important that that be acknowledged. But beyond that, I think it's also important that when we came before the voters, I believe it was in two thousand and eighteen, to request support for a referendum, MGT now has something that we did not have, and that is a detailed plan. Now, I I I would like to see more communication and even though a bill may say one thing, it does not prevent them from doing more than the bill requires. And what I have seen and what I'm hearing continuously from Dr. McNulty is her willingness to do more, to come before this council, to go before the citizens on a, in a variety of ways. And so I would urge not only that this council support the resolution, but I would also ask that the citizens of this community support the referendum because it is a key part of our effort to create a city that is attractive to others around the country, whether they be businesses, whether. Whether they be others who want to invest in our community and whatever you think. Um, it starts with having a solid public school system. And while I've heard many people, or I shouldn't say many, some people talk against it. I've not heard a viable option, but let's be clear, that's not why I'm supporting it. I'm supporting it because it's good for the community. Uh, and then the last thing I'd say is that Jack Martin did not have ultimate authority. He, uh, in fact, I was present when he made a number of recommendations that were rejected. By the school board, um, and so I think that to paint him in that way. While he had uh, certainly advisory, he was in an advisory capacity. And um, and worked with them, he did not have the ultimate authority that the emergency manager has now.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dunham.
Oh, Madam Chair, real quick, um, before you go, Dunham, can you, can you allow um, Dr. Page? An opportunity to address uh, the additional, um, I guess. Verbage that. Um, Mayor Karen Freeman Wilson addressed some of that. Uh, but I think especially relates to the teachers because those are a lot of the community concerns that we've received in terms of why they are against supporting it.
Okay.
Yes, and I, could I yield my time to Ms. Dunham and then answer if there's anything left, because I think she'll be able to clarify some of that as well, because she's been here a long time. Thank you.
Ms. Dunham.
Good evening, um, I'm Glenny Dunham, President of Gary Teachers Union, also President of the State Federation. So there's a lot that can be said. Yes, I've been here through the whole takeover, all four emergency managers. So I've been sitting in this seat through all of this, and at this point, I have become very weary. And, and more weary so in the last month with our, with community. Of people who continue to speak out against the referendum and speak out against the growth of our city. Um, I, I say often that when people come to this city, they don't say, um, they, they looking for your, your public school system. There's not a city in the country that doesn't have a viable public school system. And yes, Gary has been through a whole lot and we continue to go through a whole lot. But I just, I just know this referendum, I mean, we, we, we've been here three times. I'm the president of the state federation and I see twenty-seven districts. And out of my twenty-seven districts, I know twenty-three have went for a referendum. I, I, I tell the people, the enemy is not MGT. We might not like MGT, when MGT came, twenty-two other companies bid it on this position. We, we didn't go for MGT, we went for a local guy who used to be local, but, but then they throw in the academic piece. And the people that we were supporting only did the finances, and Jack Martin did not have sole control, as the mayor said. Jack Ma, I mean, I went to Indianapolis every time there was a do ad meeting. I was in every committee meeting, Saturday, I was, I mean, I, I've been through all of this. And I'm, I'm just weary of people who continue to talk down the referendum. I mean, everybody's been to West Side to a lyrics production or a basketball game. And, and some seniors called me, some members of my church, they asked me, why are there buckets in the service? You know, why, why is it uh, ninety-five degrees in Bailey in the summertime? Why is it uh, no ventilation, good ventilation at Bethune? But we continue to talk about, we don't need funds. The state of Indiana and Vernon took us there a, a couple Tuesdays ago. They have changed the way that they fund schools, and there's, the law is there that you pass a referendum. The last do ad meeting, they pretty much told us to put up or shut up. I sat through the career center with the Roosevelt piece, where we had our seniors coming in there with oxygen tanks, on crutches, on chains. Giving them a promise that we were gonna get Roosevelt back, and look at Roosevelt, still sitting there. Nobody has grabbed Roosevelt after the state board just threw it back in our faces. And so it's time for us to put up or shut up. It's time for us to uh, uh, invest in our children or not invest in our children. It's not about me, Carlos, Vernon, the mayor, uh, past mayor Freeman Wilson. It's about the facts, and everybody talking about, you know, you don't know what the numbers are. They are on gateway. Um, I, glorious, I said at all the fiscal management meetings with you, so I understand what you're saying, and we have had some bad. Uh, bad characters come through here with MGT, but every, and, and I talked about it on last Tuesday. I, I, I see a team now, I see a team now, uh. You know, last year was the first time that we had got anything in twelve years. We got a bonus. And so they're talking about a million dollars, teachers might get a four percent raise. It, it wasn't uh, Gary that did away with raises, it was the state of Indiana that took increments away in two thousand and twelve. Where every year we knew we were going to get a thousand dollar raise. That wasn't, so the boogeyman is not MGT. The boogeyman is the state of Indiana, thirteen fifteen, six fifty-five sixty-seven. They were talking about uh, taking our schools and, you know, breaking them up and sending us here and sending us there. And Senator Melton was able to get on with the Republicans because you know, the, the Democrats don't have a voice in Indianapolis. We don't have a voice. We went down there begging and pleading about the bills. We said, please don't strip our school board or their voice. But our school board continued to make the noise that was unnecessary, and the state was listening to all of that noise. MGT didn't come here on their own, so the school board continued to beat them up. As a union president, I've been trying to work with them. I've been trying to just maintain what we have in our contract. MGT didn't strip us of working conditions. The state of Indiana stripped up, up, of working conditions. So, I mean, everybody that's complaining, you, you know, you don't have any skin in the game. You don't work here. I remember when Senator Melton and another, you don't work for the district is what I'm saying. When Senator Melton and Brandon Comer on the last minute was able to go to the internet bank and borrow money so that we can make payroll. I mean, every, every other, every other week, we didn't know, teachers calling me, it's a rumor, we're not gonna make payroll. And, and, and yes, we borrowed money to make payroll, but we wanted them to borrow money to make payroll, we worked. So we should get paid and we always saw them DT, if you can't pay us, and we told Dr. Poot the same thing, let us know so we can decide what we wanna do. So the teachers, we've been here, you know, um, the raise would be nice, you know, I'm encouraging my teachers to vote for it. I'm a citizen of Gary, born and raised here, my baby graduated from West Side. So it's like, you know, all of what we're hearing on LTH and all the, all of this and all of that, I believe people. In this group right here can sit down and, and answer the question, we've been trying to answer the questions, but when we answer the questions, people come up with their own facts. You know, so we need to pass the referendum so we can move on. I mean, we're talking about, people talk about the money is there, but don't you wanna have more? We talk about the four million with the U- United States still. I mean, if something breaks down, where, where is the extra money coming from? People keep talking about, you got extra money, you got, where is it? Because I've looked at the budget every year, and I bet if they had some money, we'd be getting some of it. There's no money, and when you operate in a deficit, teachers can't even ask for a raise. Of course, we asked for one, but the state of Indiana said you don't have to get one. So I'm just saying, I talk about my pair of professionals who make ten dollars an hour. No, MGT didn't run teachers away. A lot of teachers did not want, some of the teachers were not licensed. We had the Emerson, the whole Emerson group who were artiste, and they didn't have license, they had been there thirty years, and we argued for them. But they didn't have license to be an Indiana state teacher. They could've got emergency permit, but after thirty years, they didn't want any emergency permit. They went on because there's a thousand vacancies in the state of Indiana. There's a thousand teacher vacancies in the state of Indiana. I can go right across to East Chicago and probably get more money if I. You know, it's like a competition now. You can go wherever you want and get a job wherever you want, all over this country in education. So it's time for us to stop playing, it's time for us to give our children what they need, it's time for us to pass the referendum. I mean, like I said, I've been sitting here through the whole, I don't, I think I've been here through all of this. The mayor was here, Vernon was here, but I mean, it's, it's time, it's time, I mean, and it's, it's really vicious. So I hope it's vicious because people are really wanting to make a change. You know, that's the viciousness in what's going on with this conversation about this referendum. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. McNulty?
Madam Chair.
Yes, um. Representative Smith.
Yeah, uh, I'd like to show two documents and then have comments, is that okay? And the documents are related to the, to the discussion that you had here, if I, if I may.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna share the screen. And I'm going to uh. Uh, my emails that I got today. Can you see the screen?
I can't.
You can't? Uh, oh, I should have the screen, okay.
Vanessa Williams may have to, uh, we may have to give you authority to do that. Okay, looks like he's doing it now.
Okay, um. It, it was mentioned about the academic performance. And I'm sure that anybody who follows the do ad meetings know that I've been on MGT for a long time about academic performance. I wanna say the same thing that the mayor said. Uh, I am ethically not a fan of MGT. I want them gone. I want them gone. I, 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 I'm being very transparent in that I want local control of our schools. I think that we were doing a better job and, and, and I want. The school corporation to be restored to local control. And because of that, I raised the issue, I, I, I've only been on that twice. I can only serve one year and I have to go off and then somebody else comes on because it's the way the legislation was written. But, but one thing where I was able to get. The do ad board to finally understand is that we got to stop paying attention to just the fiscal. State of the school corporation, but the academic form. So, in this contract, uh, that I, that I mentioned to uh, Councilman Lay. Uh, it, it is a three point seven million dollar contract. But if. MGT does not meet the requirements in various areas. Then it will be reduced to a two point nine million dollar contract, the first year. And the second year to a two point six million dollar contract. You will see in here that uh, there, I, I can't get to the actual pages, this is the quickest way for me to do that. But you will see that it has certain things in here. If they fail to reach one of the benchmarks that goes with. Uh, uh, academic achievement, they'll lose fifty thousand. The second one, sixty thousand they will lose. A hundred and forty thousand for this one, fifty thousand for this and fifty thousand. And then I talked about engagement. You cannot change the school corporation without engagement of the community. In the, and, and when you look at the quarter to effective schools research. Uh, they, 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 in the first generation, they said nothing about involving the community and parents. In the second quarter, uh, generation of effective schools research, they said you must have engagement of the community and parents. And so I was able to convince them to put something in here about engagement. So if they don't do these benchmarks here, you see that they, that they're capable of losing a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, of, of their, of their contract, and it goes on the operations and a whole lot of things, so there are benchmarks in here. Which, if, if MGT was not motivated to do anything academically. Hopefully, the loss of money would motivate them to do it. So I wanted to share that with you first of all. I don't know if you have any questions on this before I go to the next document.
Any questions?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna close this, um, hopefully I can get to the next document. Okay, here's the next document. Uh, you know. Discussion was that we don't know how much debt we, we have, but the state of Indiana knows how much debt we have. And so if you, if you look at this. Um, at one point, we did have a hundred twenty, at least that's what I was told as a state legislator down there where we were dealing with. With uh, all the issues that we've been dealing with the school corporation for a number of years. And so today, I, I, I asked the state to give me the official document. Showing the debt for the Gary Community School Corporation. This was as of June thirty this year. You will see it, 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 it is, it substantiates what Dr. McNulty said. When they took over, when I mentioned a figure of a hundred twenty, that was prior to, that was prior to MGT taking over. When they took over, the debt was one hundred and four million dollars plus dollars. It is at seventy-nine now, as you can see here. And so, you know, we're trying our best to be as transparent as we can with this issue. Vernon Smith has never been uh, aligned with deception, never. And if, if, if I find out people are using me, I will pull away from them. I will not deceive the people that I am trying to serve. Any question about this? So we know, and I'll send this document to anybody who wants it, this is the debt presently. Which is seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine million, just like Dr. McNulty said. Any questions? Okay, now. Yes. Yes.
No, I'm staying, thank you.
Okay, let, let, let me, let me make some comments now. There, there is a misnomer that, that, that there are a lot of mismanagements that occurred in the Gary Community School Corporation. And let me just indicate, yes, there was some. But everybody who was on the school board would have been locked up and put in jail if there was a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of misuse of dollars. That's a lot of misuse, a hundred and twenty million dollars. People go to prison for misuse of twenty-five thousand, fifteen thousand, ten thousand. You got some, some, some mayors or some of our neighboring cities that are getting ready to go to jail for this management of some money, large, small amounts. Don't you know that the FBI would lock up everybody who was associated with the Gary Community School Corporation as fiscal matters? If it was, it was determined that there was a hundred and twenty million dollars of mismatch. The state has to be held accountable for some of the things that it did to put us in that kind of debt. The first thing that happened was the tax. Everybody in Gary went down there, they wanted to, to get relief from taxes, and people from all over the state wanted relief from taxes. So we passed, I didn't, I didn't vote for the caps. Because I know if the need is still there, then you gotta provide for that need. And so they put the caps in, so that created a problem not only for school corporations. For municipal cities and all, all levels of government. And then they changed the school funding formula. If you're not a growing school corporation like Fish, uh, Fishers or, 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 or like uh, Monster or something like that. That, 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 that school formula was punitive towards, towards the Gary Community School Corporation. We started losing millions and millions and millions of dollars based on this school formula. It used to be there was things in it called weights, there were, there were monies that you got for certain things. They took all that out. They took the begoaster out, which Gary was the beneficiary of because we were losing students. And the begoaster principal was, was in the uh, the, 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 the funding. So that you could, you could lose students and still have a chance to, to make adjustments. And then they came up with all these alternative ways of getting an education. Uh, charter schools, vouchers, visual schools and so forth. What school corporation got hit the worst? Well, pretty much it, it might be an argument between IPS and Gary Community School Corporation. And, and what happened is all of these alternative programs, they came into the big cities where there were big dollars. You don't see them going on to rural areas and places like that. They were coming after the money. And so all those things put together, plus other legislation that, that uh, Mrs. Dunham mentioned. Created the problem for the Gary Community School Corporation. Now, certainly our image played a part in it too. So we have to look at the historical perspective to understand where we are at this particular point. And so I, I, I want you to understand that, that, one more thing, and then I'm gonna shut up unless you have questions. Is that there is not a mindset down in, in Indianapolis to help Gary Indiana. And so they use all kinds of excuses not to help us. Tim Brown, who has become the guru of, of, of salvation for school corporations. Has said to our delegation, and if you don't believe me, talk to some of the other members of our delegation. He said, if Gary Indiana is not willing to help itself, you can expect any help from the state. He has never said that if we do pass this, he's gonna definitely help us, so we, we shouldn't. We shouldn't spread that room around. I'm trying to be as transparent as I can. He's never said, if you pass it, we're gonna help you. What he said was, if you don't pass, we won't consider it. That's what he said. And so we need to understand where we are, so don't say Vernon Smith lied to you. And said that he was gonna do this, because Tim, Tim, Tim Brown is, 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 is a moving target as far as I'm concerned. He's, he, he, he's one of those wiggle dolls, he just wiggles all around, you know. Uh, I, I, I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna base anything on what he said, but I want to take that excuse away from him. Because as Councilman Lay has indicated, I've introduced bills to forgive Gary of his common school debt. I've introduced bills to give us $50 million, which was our debt that we needed to take the time that didn't deal with the common school fund. It was the debt that we had in the community and across states and so forth. And so those were the situations that we found ourselves in. So I just wanted to say that the reason I support this referendum is I have no children. I have no grandchildren in the Gary Community School Corporation. I'm doing it because it's good for the community. And I'm gonna pay more than the rest, the average person's gonna pay because I have rental property in Gary. So I'm gonna pay on my building that I live in. I'm gonna pay for my rental property. And I'm willing to do it for the good of Gary Indiana because I love Gary Indiana. I want to thank Reverend Jackson for his sermon in the morning. And I want to thank Glenn Eva for her sermon tonight because they both have said what needs to be said. We need to understand where we are in this situation. If you love Gary, like you say you love Gary, you'll vote for this referendum because House Bill 1315 says unless we operate ourselves, we operate in the black for two years. We can't ever get freed from the state control. And as Glenn Eva said, when Charlie Brown and I asked for help and we invited legislators up here to Northwest Indiana, they came up and saw the condition of our school corporation and they said they wanted to help. But you know what they did? They went to Lake Station. They went to River Forest School Corporation. They went to Hammond. They went to East Chicago. They went to every school corporation around here and said, can we divide up Gary's student population and give you a portion? The only thing that saved us from that legislation was nobody wanted us. Otherwise, we would not have a Gary Community School Corporation. So, you know, if we expect sitting around waiting for Superman to come save us, it's not gonna happen. We got to save ourselves. And I mean, and this is the first step towards doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
For that. Thank you also for the sermons. He just gave us a sermon. And Dr. Smith was my kindergarten principal, so I'm putting you out there, Dr. Smith.
And Corey Jackson was one of the students that gave me it. Holy heck. I'm glad that God worked a miracle in your life, little Mo.
Okay, we have two citizens, Emmett Mosley and Michaela Spring.
Spangenberg.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Mobley, could you go ahead? You have three minutes.
Mosley.
Mosley.
Okay. I just want to say this. And I was hoping, first of all, I just found out about this. Just got on. So besides the former mayor, Representative Smith, I pretty much, I heard that very clearly of Mr. Tolliver. But so part of what I want to say is that, and I was there on the DOAB call, Zoom, where they talked about this. But what I want to express is that there needs to be more information put out in the community. I have been involved with fighting for Roosevelt to stay open from the beginning. That meeting when I was with the part of the Interfaith Federation. Been at this for a long time. And all those meetings I went to with the with the MGT, I have never received a document that gave out a strategy on education, finance, administration. Never received a document. And to me, that's just like unbelievable that representatives of a school corporation don't put out information for the people. I wish that residents that have children in the school knew about this hearing, knew about this meeting. Because they are the ones, my neighbors, okay? I would have gone to them and said, hey, did you all know about this? But I didn't know until a few minutes ago. I'm also the students, their parents don't know about this meeting, don't know about these meetings. Okay, but I do go when there's a public meeting and it's touted and it's talked about for a time where people, I go to those meetings. I encourage the parents to bring, to come to those meetings and bring their children. So we have not had, I have not seen where this organization is trying to do something different. Because there has to be some accountability. When you talk about doing this, there's accountability. There's no, there aren't any systems, right? Except for I think Fort Wayne, right? Where the school system has been taken over by a private entity. Okay? So pretty much residents have no say. So when there are hearings, whether it's DOAB, they express but allow citizens to express and get information. So if this is gonna go through, there's time. It's, we still got over a month. There's time to hold public meetings. Public meetings. Get information out. Utilize the money that you're spending on marketing and PR. There's time to get information out to citizens saying this is what, these are the details of how money is going to be spent. And these are the details of how we're gonna transform this corporation that makes citizens want to come back. There's gotta be a marketing plan because you gotta sell this again. I don't blame parents for taking their kids here and there. There's gotta be a marketing plan. You gotta feel like you want your child in the system and they're gonna get a great education. You know, hey, I'm a former school board member in East Chicago. So I mean, this is very detailed on how you should be operating. And I don't see that. So I hope that you could say, hey, it's only the eighth. Why not, why, let's do a, let's barrage the community with saying, hey, we're gonna have public meetings and gonna have distribution of information on paper. Not just telling residents, here it is. But the distribution of information. We want teachers. I love teachers. So I want teachers to make money. I just believe they have money so after they put in their time that they can retire and feel good. But all of that means that someone at the administrative level have to do a different way of engaging the community, disseminating information to the community. And I have not seen this. I mean, when the first emergency manager came, hey, I was part of the group at my church. We hosted, I think the first time that the emergency manager spoke to the public. We hosted the meeting. Will we do that? So I just believe there has to be more. There's plenty of time to get information out, to put yourself on the line and say, hey, come, we're gonna tell you every little detail about how we want to spend this money and how we're gonna do something different.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley.
That can respond to that. Our committee is working on that. This Thursday, 6 o'clock, Facebook Live. We will do it. We have a series of, we can't really meet face to face. But if you want, if you want the documents, we do have documents. We will mail them to you. I will personally see that you get them. And if not, there are other people who are working in the committee that will get you any information you want. We've already asked for the percentage for each initiative. We're waiting on that document, but there are documents that are available. And I wish that we could share with the whole community if we were in a different situation from the pandemic, that we could really get with you and show you documents, but it won't permit it. But I'm hoping that Dr. McNulty understands that she needs to do some of what I did tonight is show these documents. So people will, so it's not just me saying it. But they begin to believe it. But I encourage you to tell everybody that there is a Facebook Live scheduled for Thursday at 6:00 p.m. and there are future ones scheduled as well.
Yes, there's many more coming. And I totally agree with your comments, Mr. Mosley. And we also have a vote yes for Gary School's website. So you can please look on there. We have all this information posted as well. But I echo what Dr. Smith said. I'll be happy to meet with you or bring you whatever information you might need.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Michaela.
Thank you. So I really appreciate Dr. Smith. I really appreciate Ms. Dunham and all the other speakers tonight. But I have to disagree on this point of how we make these drastic changes that need to happen in our school corporation. Trying to do the same thing that we've done, which is, you know, go along with what MGT says they're gonna do and just hope for the best, has not gotten us anywhere so far. And I'm honestly tired of seeing Tony Bennett make a fool out of this community because that's what happens. Tony Bennett guts public education in a way that disproportionately harms Gary when he's state superintendent. Then he turns around and through Coopers for Quality Education, which is a lobbying group, he turns around, he lobbies Tim Brown. He pays the majority of Tim Brown's reelection expenses every time he goes up for reelection. And then through his partial ownership of MGT, he cashes in. And everyone in the room who was voting on which group got to take up the mantle of fixing our school corporation, they knew, they were aware that Tony Bennett had partial ownership of MGT. You know, we had other groups there that people in the community, people in the city government preferred and spoke to their preference for. And that was ignored. And frankly, the best judge of someone's future behavior is usually their past behavior. MGT has not shown us any kind of financial transparency. When MGT presents updates to people, it's usually updates about, you know, this new program they're gonna bring out or that new program they're gonna bring out. But it's never a consistent, it's not the expectation of what you would think from a school corporation. But they think that they can get away with it because that's honestly how little they seem to think of us. The operational expenditures for Gary Community School Corporations under MGT is higher than any of the surrounding communities, significantly higher than many. We spend less on instructional expenditures than any of the other communities. So when I hear Dr. Paige McNulty say, well, we're gonna have to cut all these instructional programs, that's what they have been cutting. They've closed down schools. They've cut instruction. They've done all those things. But they haven't been cutting down these operational expenditures which are out of control. And they don't provide transparency about what those actually are. And, you know, they were given a contract for three years. Now they have a contract for two years. But they didn't accomplish the task that they allegedly set out to do in those three years. And in no way are they coming to the community in any meaningful way and engaging around these things. Because back when they started thinking about doing this referendum much earlier in the year, instead of actually coming to the community directly, it became this kind of PR market research thing where you have telemarketers calling your phone, asking you about all this different language and which thing you like best. That's not an honest way of dealing with people. And so what we hear them say about what this referendum will do, those are things that tested well with consumers. These aren't necessarily reflections of what the needs are and how they'll be met. And as has been acknowledged, we have no control once we hand this money over to them again. Because we've been handing the money over and over again. You know, the state hands the money. They have the money that comes for our students. Every year, we have enrollment trending downward. They don't, they don't seem to understand that shutting down schools reduces the confidence that we have in our school corporation. You know, people tell these things to their face and they ignore them. People demanded transparency. It's been ignored. And I understand that Dr. Smith has gone some things into the contract that hopefully will be abided by, but we don't know because that hasn't been in the contract before. We haven't had a chance to see if they abide by that or if DOAB will actually hold them to that. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. And I really hope that MGT doesn't get to make a fool out of us again because I care about whether we still have a school corporation at the end of this. I've seen many communities where that has not been the case. And this is what happens in urban communities across this nation. This is the scenario that plays out. And then we become a feeder district for charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take our last person, Will Miller, because we do have two other items on the agenda. So, Will Miller.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Barnes Caldwell. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm very, honestly, I'm very disappointed not in your representation. Honestly, I really, I'm impressed by my counsel. I'm impressed by, of course, Vice Principal from Ivanhoe Elementary School, which he's doing what he has always done, been a vanguard of standards, pointing out great points about many things, education, how we should protect ourselves, what expectations should be in addition to just being a great leader. What I'm disappointed in is that we don't have control over our own destiny in relation to our education for our children. It really shakes me to hear a lot of talk about things. Being that I'm a professor myself, I teach business. And when you're in a business class, when you're presenting anything, and I'm surprised from an education point of view, we don't even have a PowerPoint here. We don't have any statistics. We don't have any representation from the individuals that are asking us for our money. So I can be told about the website. I can be told about all those things. But honestly, if you are coming into my community where I have a decision, you haven't sold me on anything. I love the passion by the pastors, but usually pastors are inspiration. They don't always have all the detail. And I love my religious community. I love them. I love the Baptist ministry ministers. They have played some hard because we're working hard from now until infinity to get to a location. But right now, we're talking about numbers, decisions that relate to what an entity has done in our community and what they haven't done. I'm seeing the same thing. I see the same thing. I don't see any detail. And from a distance, from the party I'm a part of, which we definitely debate, we debate things. So I see more of, well, if you don't do this, Gary, Indiana, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna help. So there's a lot of fronts that we need to have conversation on. And I'm definitely gonna have more that I have control of. But I'm for my city first and I believe in the constitution that if you don't give me representation, you can't tax me. So I have enjoyed my representatives for my So I, I have enjoyed my, uh, representatives for my council, both sides. I'm impressed by Attorney, uh, Flora Slay. Uh, I know we've had our differences, but honestly, he is who he is. And, uh, you all are, are great representations of Gary, Indiana. I'm proud of you. I, I, I expect more, uh, coming our way. I, I don't think the referendum will pass if, um, these, this management group and Doc, Doc McNulty, I've heard some great things about you, but there needs to be, be a better presentation, more detail. It's just too lacking. Uh, we're, people may not think people in Gary are educated, but we definitely have a number of educated people that we don't present the correct information. It's not gonna go to, we can't just talk to us. So thank you for the opportunity. Looking forward to, um, some better information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Caldwell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. I would like to conclude this meeting for, uh, I'm sorry, I would like to conclude the discussion on the resolution. Uh, the next item on the agenda.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes, ma'am.
Take the next two or.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. We have, uh, two other ordinances on the agenda for tonight. CPO two thousand twenty forty-four, which is an ordinance revised in twenty twenty appropriations for the Police Department operating budgets, Fund seven twenty-five donation fund for the fiscal year beginning January one twenty twenty and ending December thirty-one twenty twenty. And CPO two thousand twenty forty-five, which is an ordinance revising the JAG budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince. And I think Ms. Colvin is on the call so she can, um, she can speak to both of these. Ms. Colvin.
Chairwoman, uh, the police chief will be doing the speaking tonight.
I'm sorry. Oh, he'll speak on twenty forty-four?
Yes, both of these are for the Police Department.
Okay. Okay, we're ready.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I want to speak first about, I think you said first, CPO twenty forty-four.
Uh huh, appropriations for the Police Department Operation Budgets, Fund seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five is our donation fund. We received a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Joyce Foundation of Illinois to appropriate monies for a, uh, a program that will allow us to do training and tracking within the Police Department through an electronic format called Benchmark. One of the things that we decided to focus on with this budget were use of force, training, community outreach, and ongoing, uh, uh, policies. This, uh, fifty thousand dollar grant will address those training issues and the necessary background data that we would need in order for us to implement the Benchmark program. Benchmark is a, is a electronic program that will allow us to basically track and enable us to do more training with an officer. So let's say an officer has a training issue, nothing major, just something that he needs to train on. Instead of us having this in a paper file, instead of us having it in a paper format, we can have it in an electronic, electronic format and attach it to his, uh, training record. And it's available to every supervisor and we can do more counseling and coaching. So that's what this fund is for, in order for us to spend this grant for us to, for us to do this background data training so that we can implement this program. It is in this fund so that we can spend it.
Okay. Count, questions from any council members or comments?
Madam Chairman. Chairwoman. What was the source of the grant? Looked like we should have just started, somebody's offering to give us fifty thousand dollars for training. What's the source?
The Joyce Foundation gave us the grant. Well, actually, we did a outreach program to Benchmark. It's a program that a lot of departments are using to track training and to do these type of new innovative things to try to keep up with officers' training, use of force, policies. You know, right now, we do everything through almost a paper format or CDs. It's a nightmare trying to track those down. Attorney, any attorney that's tried to get records from us, it takes time to put it together. It takes time to get it. We just want to streamline that. Benchmark suggested that we focus on these things and the Joyce Foundation came in uh, to assist us with that. The Joyce Foundation is part of the University of Chicago. So it was something that we applied for and we received along with Harvey Illinois and another police department. I'm not sure of where they are.
Without any further explanation, I believe we should accept fifty thousand dollars and allow the training to go forward. I'll see why we should spend a lot of time on this one.
Right. Anybody else have any questions or comments from the council? Anyone, anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Chief Evans. Okay, CPO two thousand twenty forty-five, which is an ordinance revising the JAG budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty. Uh, are you doing that one, Ms. Colvin, or is someone else doing that?
I can do that one as well.
Okay.
That's for the Police Department as well. We, actually, you've seen this budget before. It's the Justice Assistant Federal Grant that we get from the county. Uh, the budgeting for that allows us to spend our dollars that we get every year in our Justice Assistance Grant. The Justice Assistance Grant is a grant that every police department receives. The city of Gary has consistently received the most money in the county out of the shared grant. But we have to have the budget appropriations to spend out of it. One of the things that we're buying with the, uh, with, with the grant that we had for last year was equipment for our special operation team, specifically bulletproof vests. The year before that, we bought some cameras, uh, for the police station. A year before that, we bought uh, some cars for our narcotics vice unit. We use this grant yearly to, to, to purchase things without impeding on the general fund. The issue that we had when you saw this before, we, we put the money, the budget amendment in machinery and equipment, which was the wrong line item. Line items and machinery and equipment have to be five thousand dollars per item. And we just didn't realize that. So we want to make a change from the seventy thousand dollars going into machining and equipment to other materials so that we can spend it properly. That's the only change to what we, what you've seen before.
Okay. So you just want to change that line item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions from any council members?
Madam, um, Chair.
Yes.
Um, just want to ask the chief, what is, what do you have proposed to spend the dollars on this year? You just muted yourself.
You muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We're actually spending this funding in our community room, which is a shared room within, within the Police Department that everyone uses. We're going to paint in there, put some furniture in there, and we're also going to increase our technology. We're going to buy some more computers. Right now, we don't have a computer for every officer to use, believe it or not. And so we have shared computers. Every officer has access to a computer. But we want to increase our technology and have a computer for almost all of our police officers without having to share them.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're, I'm happy about that. Anybody else have any comments or questions? From the council? No one? Okay, how about from the public? Okay, if there are no further questions, then that ends the ordinances for the Finance Committee. And I do have to leave, uh, after this, you know, I had a tragedy of my family, so. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Just offering my condolences again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, let's be, uh, clear, uh, uh, a very good friend of mine, and I consider Councilwoman Brown to be that Oliver Gillian lost his son. I've had the same experience. So, uh, uh, again, that's a very difficult thing to, to do when a parent buries their child. So it's very hard to bury your child versus, let's say, your, your parent.
Right.
It's, it's somewhat out of sequence. So.
Sorry, Councilwoman.
So they both have my sympathy. I've spoken in great, uh, detail with, uh, uh, Oliver Gaim as well as, uh, Councilwoman Brown. She, she called me and I appreciate, uh, the call because I consider we can disagree here in the council meeting. But I certainly consider her a very important friend of mine. And I don't get, I don't get rid of my friends.
Thank you.
There's not that many of me.
And your family in our prayers. This is Councilman Brown. We continue to pray for you and your husband.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you give us information about the funeral and, and things of that nature too?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, everything's gonna be in Indianapolis. I, I do have the information. It'll, it'll be streamed live and I'll give you the information later. Yes, I have it all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.